Run to this computer. All right. Okay, it is live. You are live.
You can unmute the recording?
Yes, ma'am.
That's right.
You have three people. We have four. I guess this is gonna be time to say. I have a client. I'm like, oh shit.
All right. We will call our meeting to order at 6:05. First item on the agenda is our agenda review. Anybody there? How much of the agenda changes?
Projectiles. I hope so, just projectiles.
Actually, the only scientific. So unless you have a question.
It won't as long as you mute yourself.
Okay, so I guess I know agenda review items. All right, do we have any comments from the public?
Anybody that's online, if you raise your hand, then we can. Move you over again for comments.
Well, somebody.
If you have a hand, great.
Can I give you one second? I'm doing this here. Yeah, ladies. Okay, Leah, I think you are able to chat now.
Okay.
One second, I just want to. Okay, can you try again?
Yes, can you hear me now? Awesome, good. Okay, great, I'm just gonna give you the PTO update. Does that sound good? Great, so in November, we had our fall feast. It was beautiful, super yummy. We had great participation from families and staff. Really appreciated all the food. We tried to give staff a heads up to not bring in lunch and bring in an empty container to take home leftovers, and that worked really well. The PTO also supported an all-school celebration. We had four parents come in and help cover all of the doors in the school, which was quite the morning. That was fun. And now we're shifting our focus to the upcoming events. So Sunday, December 8th, we have the Gift Making Festival. We have 10 tables of activities for kids to make homemade gifts for the special people in their lives. We will also have a wrapping station, so kids can wrap onsite, and we will also have a photo backdrop. Tuesday, December 10th, we have Coffee Talk with Sean and Greg. And then we have a few things in the works. We just had the Haven reach out, so we will be collecting something for a food drive. More to come on that. The wish jars from the Fall PTO Grant are set to be displayed before the holiday concerts next week, so I think that will be a nice start and end to the evening for families. And we are also kicking off holiday gift giving this week. We are following the model that we did last year, where we take a whole-school approach. We pair homeroom teachers with support or specials or additional staff, and then each class collects money to give a gift to their three, or sometimes two, staff members. And it's a way for everyone in the building to be recognized and hopefully to get a little something for the holidays. Families and kids can also show appreciation in a non-monetary way by making a card for their teacher at the Gift Making Festival. We will have a special box there collecting cards that kids can make. And then also in the works, Chrissy Morley reached out about a grant she received to get a soup and sandwich day off the ground, and I think there's a lot of enthusiasm on the PTO from parents around that. So we are forming a cafeteria subcommittee group to help get her the volunteers and support she needs to make the initiative a success. And that is all I have for right now. Any questions?
No, that's super helpful. Thank you for calling in. I've been reading your notes at the past few meetings, so those have been helpful too. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much for being there.
Great, we'll move on to our presentations. First one is our special item, Brett?
Yes, I'm gonna try to share my screen. You need to let each of you have to request.
Jamie is like running through. We're technically live, isn't it, tonight?
Right, so I think what I would suggest to board members is if you haven't, if you look up to the Zoom, then you'll be able to see what you're actually sharing.
That's why they give me, I'm in a straight glass. So when Jam's here, I can't log in first. I have to let them log in first. So it wasn't the fault. But that's why, just in case, right?
You're on Zoom, you see.
Like, we have seen individuals with. This bill is education act slide.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm. Can you hear the mic, Eric?
I'm assuming we can.
Okay. I'm right there, Eric. I'm the director for Student Services for the school district. Each year during the budget presentation, I give an overview of what special education is and the impact on the Norwich budget. It is about 16% of the total Norwich budget, so I think it warrants an explanation, opportunities for questions, explaining the rationale for why we have these funds allocated for students with disabilities. The first slide that you see, the general overview, there's federal education laws, which we refer to as IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Act, which ensures that all students, regardless of mobility, are afforded the same opportunities and equal access to education. A few of the primary tenants, FATE, which ensures that all students are provided a free, appropriate public education. Public meaning we can't charge parents of students with disabilities money because their child may cost more than educated. That has to be part of the public system. Least Restrictive Environment, LRE, is to ensure that all students are in the general education classroom, receiving their instruction with all students to the maximum extent appropriate. And then IEP is an Individualized Education Program, which is the document and the plan which describes how a student learns, what their needs are, what their strengths are, and what the school district is going to do about getting those students. Briefly, the special education process is all regulated federally and that each state implements those rules. A referral is if a staff, a parent, or anyone from the school team can make a referral, which then triggers the team, with the parents, the school staff, to meet and discuss are there significant concerns that warrant an evaluation? Team decides yes, then an evaluation will be conducted and it has to be completed within 60 days. That could include anything from psychological testing, academic achievement testing, adaptive behavior, speech and language, occupational therapy. The evaluations specifically designed for that student, what those concerns are. Within those 60 days, a team completes evaluations, reviews the results, and then makes a determination to answer really three questions. Does an educational disability exist? If so, does it significantly adversely impact that student's learning? And then three, if so, do they require specially designed instruction? Something explicitly targeted for that student as a result of their disability? Within 30 days of that meeting, the team would then develop an IEP. The IEP is reviewed annually, and then every three years, at a minimum, the students are reevaluated to check on progress, to see if that condition still exists, if they need an IEP. This slide shows the categories of educational disabilities. You'll notice they don't necessarily correlate to medical diagnoses. These are listed in the federal regulations for student disabilities. And how you meet criteria for these may be different than a diagnosis which you receive from a pediatrician or a psychologist. And now we're gonna get into some specific data. Looking at the Marion Cross School. And this slide shows the percentage of students with disabilities by primary disability from the total enrollment. So some students have more than one disability, and this categorizes the Marion Cross students over the past five years. And you'll see that there tends to be common trends that. DD, which was developmental delay, tends to be the largest category over the past five years. That's for students between ages three and nine, and it's really a catch-all for those students when they're young. If the team notices something atypical about their learning, and the most effective approach is early intervention. And so there's a large number of younger students that are identified, and after they reach age nine or 10, they're reevaluated, and if there are still concerns, those numbers in that DD category will then transition to another category. One specific example, if you look at SLI, which is speech-language impairment, it looks like there's a large spike in this current year. And there's also a decline in developmental delay. So last year, we had four students with a developmental delay that were reevaluated, and now they're identified under speech-language impairment. Because that more accurately reflects the challenges that they have. If there are questions that would go with this, please just interrupt or speak up. Sorry, these are cumulative, or is this? I mean, if you're at the bottom of the bars, it means that you have about 70% of the kids with some sort of. Sorry, so this is based on the number of students compared. So if we're looking at speech-language impairment, about 21% this year out of the students with disabilities.
Oh, I thought this was out of the Marion Cross population.
That's the next slide.
Okay, I was like, wow, we get 70% of the kids with speech-related behaviors. Here, that's speech behavior.
Okay. So this slide shows the percentage of students with disabilities from total enrollment.
Got it.
And the most recent data from the state of Vermont that was able to access, from 2022, and that was at 18.1%, but then I have the data information written there across for the past 10 years. And we are showing a steady decline over the past three, four years in the percentage of students with disabilities. I was talking with Principal Garnier earlier, just trying to. And so what may be the reason for that? And we had some changes in special education rules that went back in July of 2022. There's a change in the funding model. There have been intervention programs that have been in place, I would say steadily increasing, both in like the FTE allocated towards it and the attention to those programs. So I think it's a good place to be for our students, where we now have a range of supports, ranging from students who only require classroom instruction, and we have intervention available, where students can receive some support for reading in math, with the check-in and checkout program, for just social behavioral needs. And then kind of at that tier-three level, we have special education IEPs for students who have more significant disabilities. This slide shows both Marion Cross. Thicker red line is Marion Cross, and that's the same line as the previous slide. But it also includes state of Vermont trends, the Ray School in Hanover, the middle school, RMS, and Hanover High School. Just to look at, as a whole SAU, where are we at with our students? Elementary school student, elementary schools tend to have higher percentages of students with disabilities than middle school and high school because some of those students need to adjust sufficiently, and they no longer need that level of support as they manipulate through the grades. And so thinking about our specific data, the budget costs, which I'll get into in the next couple of slides, really, the majority of the special education costs are from staffing. And this gives a brief overview of the different service delivery models that are available, and we have or currently utilize that Marion Cross. Push-in is when you have a special educator or one of our other professionals, occupational therapists, speech-language psychologists, go into the general classroom with the student and work with them in that environment. Pull-out is when a specialist will take a student out of the general education classroom to work with them either in a one-on-one setting or in a small group. And that may be necessary if the student's skills are significantly behind grade level, and they can't work on that skill in the classroom. Co-teaching in collaboration. We don't currently have any co-teaching models. We did three years ago. We do a little bit of pre-K. And that's really where it's a specifically designed model that we have to get approved through the state of Vermont, where a special education teacher and a classroom teacher, as the name says, co-teach a grade level or content area in the upper grades. And then academic and behavioral support. This is provided primarily by our paraprofessionals. So they would either be working with the student in the classroom to support the work that a special educator can work with the student on to facilitate transparency skills, ensuring that that child has access to what the learning is in the classroom. And some students require one-on-one paraprofessional support due to self-care needs, significant social behavioral needs. So they may have a staff member that works with them across the school day in all environments to ensure that they're getting the support they need. When we look at the specific expenses that are included in the budget, which we'll go through in more detail, and Jamie's gonna go through the presentation later. The costs include special education for kindergarten through sixth grade, so that's staff, contracted services, structural supplies, materials, and equipment. We also provide special education for students aged three through five, and that includes all the same components, staff and contracted services. Extended school year services are for students who need some instruction in service over the summer. And so there are staff costs for that as well. And then out-of-district schools and programming for Norwich resident students. For students that reside in Norwich and require a school or replacement outside of the public school, and that includes students K through twelve. So currently, we have three students that are Norwich residents, oh, dress in age, that attend out-of-district programs, and those costs come back to Norwich. For students who live in Hanover and are dressed in age, those costs go back to the Hanover students. And this final slide shows our special education budget over the past few years, and then where we actually came out on expenditure this year. And you'll see that it's rare that we are spot on with our budget projections and where we end up at the end of the year. A lot of fluctuations occur due to changes in students who replace out-of-district. You may know, we may not know. Either students that move into the district, move out, their needs change halfway through the school year, which doesn't line up with the clinical budgets and we build those budgets. And so there will be one starting. So the increase this year for projected fiscal year '26 is primarily due to salary and benefits of staff. When I looked at last year, this year '24, that difference between what was budgeted and what we actually spent was there's about 200,000 less in out-of-district tuition. So there's a student that we budgeted for that we believe was gonna require out-of-district placement, and those needs changed between when we approved the budget and the school year, and so those weren't the costs that we ended up spending. And we're also down about 30,000 in educational assistance paraprofessional salary due to unfulfilled positions. Were there any questions about anywhere we're over so far? I'm also here for the rest of the presentation, so if questions come up as we go through the line items, I can address those questions.
Couple of questions. One is, have we, have you been able to make a correlation between COVID and special education needs?
No. We have seen consistencies in some challenging areas of certain grade levels, but we're not seeing a spike in special education. I mean, I know I've been to parts of meetings where there are a number of handwriting concerns that get brought up by parents or other professionals, and it tends to be in a grain where those students would have more targeted instruction, maybe during COVID. But there isn't any thing we're seeing special education-wise, whether we're seeing an increase in need. I think part of that is addressed through intervention. If it's not a disability that's causing that challenge, those students are gonna receive that intervention and ask to be in corporate support for them, or they get back on track where they need to, as opposed to a disability which is consistently gonna be challenging for them.
Brett, I wanna go back to something you said earlier, because I just wanted to make sure that I understand it right. And that special education categories and the resulting IEPs don't necessarily track clinical diagnoses? Am I understanding that right?
Right.
So that I have a follow-up. So basically, if that's true, right, is there a connection between special education needs and a student's socioeconomic status?
We don't have any data here, but there is research and data that shows correlation between school districts and students who live in low socioeconomic conditions and higher rates in those areas for student visiting.
Would it be a fair statement to say that because of the affluent nature of Norwich, that is why we might be seeing numbers lower than the state average?
I think that's a fair assessment. I mean, the state average includes all school districts, and we're in that one small town. And Norwich is just an elementary. So those state numbers include districts K through twelve, pre-K. I think there are definitely challenges that other school districts have that we don't experience here, and we're fortunate for that. And that our school staff are able to address the needs as they present, and not maybe masking some other need that looks like something that it's not. One example is students with categories called emotional disturbance, which is not a great name, but that's the term that the regulations provide. And I think oftentimes, those students can struggle behaviorally, socially, with regulation. Some of that is caused by a legitimate emotional disturbance, mental health conditions, but I think that can also present for children who don't have a basic need now. So teasing out what's the cause can be a difficult and service situation. I think here, we're fortunate to have good evaluations. Families that work with us, and they show up, so we can really get a full picture of who the students are and kind of best communicate.
Thank you, Eric. A couple of questions, but I just, I'd be curious. You want to follow up on that last comment? To the extent you're trying to assess whether something's emotional disturbance for a child who's failing to get their basic needs met, if it's the latter, is there an IEP for that or some other way in which we work to support child's basically?
So if we go back to this slide, so there's those three criteria. The first one, is there an educational disability? And each of those categories of disability has its own specific definition that has to be met. And so we evaluate either for a student with emotional disturbance, we're looking for, do they have some psychological condition that causes them to have impairments in regulation, social behavioral skills? We look at kind of family history, we look at economic disadvantage, all those questions are part of that evaluation, so we can really try to best identify what the cause of that challenge is. And if we can do that, then we know how to best address it. So for students who don't meet that criteria that may have struggles not caused by disability, that would go back to their school's other means of support to be in those moments.
On slide four, you noted a large increase in speech-language impairment. Do you think that's a flipper trend?
That's a flip.
We expect that to go down in the next following year.
Yeah, so those students, it was three students in '23, '24, and then it's up to eight students this current year. And four of those were coming from that developmental delay. How do I go?
Then, thinking about not just the Norwich School District, but the whole SAU, is it the same cohort of children receiving special education services all the way through to end-of-year education? Or are there people cycling, children cycling in and out? How much churn, if any, is there in special education services?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. And we don't have specific numbers. I know this year alone, I've been part of two or three meetings here where we reevaluate the students that have an IEP, and the team agreed that they no longer meet criteria because they've made sufficient progress, they don't need that targeted instruction, so they moved off those IEPs. We've also had meetings at the high school where students have never had an IEP, but they're significant concern presenting. Team evaluates, and they determine that there's significant anxiety disorder, which is impacting their learning, and they require an IEP level of support and service. So I think my answer would be it's both. There definitely are students who start with an IEP in kindergarten, and I guess they're required that up through graduation to high school.
And then I guess my final question, I mean, I apologize if the language here is not precise, but just so I can try to understand the experience to the extent I can, students and families utilizing special education services. When you make that determination that someone no longer needs an IEP, is that viewed as, from a family's perspective, as a graduation or a reduction in services?
Both. We have those meetings, and I think part of you wants to celebrate because the students made so much progress that they no longer need that level of support, but with that also comes concern in parents, as students transition from this school to the middle school, from middle school to high school. And so oftentimes, it's mixed emotions in those because the evaluation results are showing good growth, no longer need for taking that student out of the class to get these services. And there are tiers of intervention that you're no longer eligible for an IEP, but you still have a condition, maybe a disability, but it's just not significantly impacting their learning.
Yeah.
There's a 504, which is a different federal law, it's a civil rights law, non-education law, that ensures that anyone with a disability has equal access and can be afforded accommodations. So oftentimes, a student that had an IEP and is no longer eligible, may be required in a 504 because they need some support and may need some accommodations in the classroom for testing, and that would then be their the tier of intervention that they need.
I appreciate that. You're trying to figure out whether someone is putting their umbrella away because it's sunny ever, because they're stopped by wet, which is a really point to put your umbrella away, and it's like, not getting the sports. It's just protection I need, right?
Yeah, one other thing that the teams consider is when we look at that student progress and we're considering, do they? do they no longer need an IEP, we look at those mitigated measures of, okay, are they making this progress? Because the services they're getting are necessary. If we take those away, would they still make that difference? So those are questions that the team has to ensure that we're not and appropriately discharging teams. Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize for being late. Um, and if I missed this, I apologize as well. Um, I'm glad you mentioned the five oh fours and I'm wondering, because that is also under your department, correct? Do we know, like, is it a similar trend? We have fewer than the state of five oh fours? Or do we have more because we tend to recognize that they need the extra support? Um, and sort of what, what sort of impact do the five oh fours have on this? Because this isn't all you do and I don't want, I don't want people to think that this is it, so.
Yeah, no, uh, I prepare the special education presentations because of that significant budget portion. Five oh four needs are addressed through the general education piece and they're not nearly as significant as special education. I don't have numbers of five oh fours hanging, but um, I'd be happy to share those. Or I've done presentations for school staff in Norwich where we look at like, what are the differences between special education and five oh four? Um, I believe here there's fourteen? Yeah, maybe a couple less. Twelve students that have five oh four plans. And some students that have a medical five oh four plan, individualized health plan, that they have diabetes or something that they need a combination, but may not impact their learning significantly. Unless something is critical.
Okay, so it sounds like the budget impact for the five oh fours is just absorbed in the regular budget and, and you've got
And it's minimal.
And you've got to have concerns about that.
I, I would say at most, there may be consultation from a occupational therapist
Okay.
or someone, or um, a teacher for deaf and hard hearing, maybe consult with the school team to ensure that the child's hope area plans are working.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to express the appreciation for Brett. Not only does he have a five oh one's for P thirty, those are kids that come to all the IEPs with the kids as presents. Those all their needs, so we have to resolve someone, you know, consult with someone which is reliable, you know, right, which is what services, so thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Garrett, just a clarification that I like to ask, the Marion Cross budget contains the special education costs for students not just here, but also at the middle school and the high school.
Correct.
Yeah, and just um, because the question was asked, um, in the eleven hundred, uh, which is your regular education, the money set aside for five oh four contracted services a year over year is actually down six thousand, six hundred dollars. So it has a, it's projected decrease in
Any other questions? Anyone from the public have questions for Brett? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Brett, for all that you do and for all the help you've come into the budget meeting last week that I missed. Very helpful to be there personally. With that said, why don't we move on to our budget presentation?
Okay, yeah, give me one second because I'm planning this and
David, do you want to do the presentation?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go over there and use, and trace them out, I don't even hear her computer anyway. Well, then I'm not, it's probably just bringing over here. I'm gonna allow and are you, are you in to sit?
Um, yes, we are.
That's okay, I'm going to do this, let's see if I can figure out what I just did. I just want to allow TruSyll. To promote the pianist. Alright. Alright. So if you'll share the screen, I think I can share the screen, sorry about this. Thank you for coming over. I'm gonna do whatever we want over here. Alright, my extent of zoom abilities, okay? Thanks much. Okay, let me um, share screen here. So um, if you opened your board docs early, I might not have posted it yet in the haste to get us up and running on the owl. So if you refresh, there is a budget presentation, same one you have, it's a paper format, okay? Um, I'm just, excuse me, open it here so we can speak to it uh, like Brett did. Maybe if I could do this there. How do we, let's see it. I don't make it bigger, is that? I don't even want it bigger. We'll just go for it. Can you see this on this, or you can't? This. I don't have a push-up for us as well. So we're just gonna go for it, okay? Alright, so the first slide is basically just telling you, um, everyone that worked directly on building the budgets, we build the budgets in a remote fashion, uh, often by departments and, um, you know, obviously the bulk of the building of the budget is done by Sean and his staff here at Marion Cross School. And then the finance team, we build the salary and benefits in conjunction with the principal and his staff over here on, based on the needs and based on looking at the enrollments. Um, and then everybody like who oversees a department, like Brian Pat and Tony Dagle and Brett, as he mentioned, they all build their portions of the budget. Then we bring it all together. Usually, um, last week of October is our first look at it as a whole complete document. Like, we all see our little pieces, but we don't really know what it's gonna look like, so it's all brought together and that's what we call our first draft. The draft you're looking at tonight is actually a second draft because as we work through the first draft, that we meet together and, you know, we look at anywhere where we might have missed something, okay, because there are all kinds of pieces that are moving around. So all of these folks were involved. Um, and on the budget committee was Neil and Garrett, right? Neil and Garrett, my budget committee members. And I think a few other folks might have popped their heads in on occasion. And so that's where we're at on that. Let's work. Okay, uh, we always like to share the slide from, I'm hoping this is updated. Sometimes I don't get the most of the date, I'm gonna fall off of the internet. Anyway, we like to share the mission and vision statements of the school districts, of the schools within the districts and what they're trying to accomplish with their kiddos. Here, we're pre-K through sixth grade. And then the children move on to Marion Cross School for seventh through eighth. I'm not gonna read them. I have technical difficulties myself, there we go. So we also like to have a discussion about the budget guidelines. The budget guidelines were shared in the September meeting for Norwich and they were ratified then. We ratified budget guidelines based on what we call as a quick model. The quick model can be found if you go to the Norwich Budget Committee pay, uh, section in the board docs. We build a quick model where we take assumptions from the prior year pushing forward, so we can see what we think it might look like based on what we know in August, okay? We did that and in doing that, the board took a look at, the quick model is broken up in two sections. And the top section shows a direct K, pre-K through six costs. And then below that, it carves out other costs that really aren't discretionary to the direct education of the students here at the school, meaning it carves out in the bottom, the cost for the SAU, the cost for transportation to and from school, which is in the Norwich budget, even though they transport to middle and high. The cost for any debt service, the cost for any capital improvements, the cost for special education out of district or special transportation. So anything that isn't a cost in the normal direct programming for the Marion Cross students here in the school is basically carved out, okay? And so when we looked at that on the quick model for pre-K through six, it showed that we were projecting about a budget increase of two hundred and two thousand or approximately three point one oh percent. And so the board charged us with trying to keep the direct K six operating budget increase at zero percent. And so I'm happy to report that when we look at the actual, and I'm sorry, I didn't rebuild this for you, but I can for the budget, don't go ahead. The actual for pre-K through six direct is six million, five hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred sixty-three. That was last year. Updated for this year, it's six million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars. That is an increase of thirty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars, or a half a percent. So in the building of what was discretionary and direct for the school here, we are up about a half a percent, point four eight percent, okay? For thirty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars. So the balance of the one point nine two percent increase or point and a half percent increase-ish is all of those other things that are below that quick model line, that are, that are nondiscretionary to Sean and his team. Okay. Then we look at projected enrollment and we use what is called the cohort survival method. It takes information as students have moved up in grade level over the past five years and it averages it. So we first of all, take the actuals for this year, which we have listed in the second column on the top chart. And it pushes those kids forward to the next grade. It then takes the adjustments based on a five-year average as people transfer from one grade level to the next. And it either, it either adds a student number in or decreases a student number out, or it can add minuses of a student art. So as you can see, in K through one, historically over the past five years, we've added four students. And then one to two, we've lost one student. Two to three, we've added one. Three to four, we've added two. Four to five, five. And five to six, we've lost three. Okay, and there's many different reasons for that. We have a bit of a transient population due in part to the folks who work at the college maybe come in for special projects, folks who work at the hospital. Sometimes if you're losing sixth graders, they might be moving on to private schools, you know, so there's many different reasons. We really haven't tracked it because the numbers aren't huge, right? But we use those numbers and we drive it into this chart and we drive it out over five years. So when we do that projected for twenty-five, twenty-six, interestingly enough, the number is static. Sometimes that happens. So then we, we meet as a team with the administration from the SAU and Sean and his folks. And then we look at what might be projected as different class sizes or sections. We do that for two reasons. First reason we do it is because we want to make sure that having twenty-one teachers is enough, right? Um, and we, when we do that, we look at what our class size policies are to try to make sure that we stay within the boundaries of that. And so we show in the second chart, the first section, that's what we have for this year for twenty-four, twenty-five. We said, well, if we kept the teachers in their same exact spots that they are in right now and look, use the new numbers, what would the class sizes look like? And you can see that would be problematic for grade four, because that would be really big classes. And so then we say, okay, well, maybe in twenty-five, twenty-six, there would have to be some movement between numbers of where the teachers are assigned. Obviously, this is a what-if, right? This is not what's gonna happen as of, you know, for next year because Sean and his team make that decision as you get closer to opening the school. Usually that decision's made, what, August, right? The end of August? Yeah, so, so that's due to change, absolutely. But it's just a what-if. And we also look at a what-if to see if we had to make cuts because as you can look back at the prior slide, with what we thought we were projecting as a dollar amount of increase, it may have required a significant cut. And significant cuts only come from reductions in staff. Not only, but usually, you can also cut all your names' budgets when they're not doing anything, but that's the whole difference to me, okay? Alright, so that's what's going on in that slide. So we look at that, I'm sorry, I'm going backwards. We look at the budget guidelines, we look at staffing. We looked at the staffing in a different view on how many do we have? Now, you might say, why do we have twenty-one teachers shown on the front? So why is it showing twenty-eight regular, regular ed teachers here? Well, because we have other folks within that certified section that are not necessarily labeled classroom teachers, right? They do, um, I'll get this wrong, but they do languages, they do arts, and they do music, and they do PE and
Librarian.
Librarian. Well, librarian is listed below them. She has her own line because that's not in the eleven hundreds. So really, the numbers that you see here also line up with what is known as your function codes in your budget. Function codes can also be looked at as departmental codes, right? They're kind of interchangeable. So when we looked at this information, the Marion Cross School, like many of our other schools, and schools in all the districts in New Hampshire and Vermont, have had a a terrible time trying to cover illness and other outages. And so substitutes are very far and few between. And when you have multiple certified staff out in the same day, it really provides a difficulty for making sure that everything is covered. And so because of that, Sean and his team decided that they would take one of the FTE in the upper section and move, take the, and move that FTE down into a a certified substitute section. We do not show certified substitute sections here. And so, and you know what? I posted the wrong one there. I'm sorry, that's last year. I posted last year here. I need to post this year. Hold on one second. I'm showing you last year's FTEs. I was obviously probably interrupted on the phone when I posted that. So let me come back to that slide and we'll look at that as we go forward. Because what occurred this year, sorry about that, guys. If you look at the FTE posting, that's within all of the sections in the board docs, it has the correct staffing FTEs. We made one staffing change from the teachers down to the substitute section. We made one staffing change from the teachers down to the substitute section. Or we made one large staffing change from the regular education EA section down to the special education EA section. We also added a .20 in ESL. So I will get that updated with the correct slide sign and data. And like I said, the data on the exhibit that is in the section of Board Docs is correct. At the end of the day, we ended up with a change of .06 FTE. Yes, my God.
Yeah, I'm looking at exhibit 11s in the Board Docs and it's still 23, 24.
Is that, okay, I'm getting it posted, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure I'm looking.
Sure, so I will get that reposted, it'll only take a minute. Right after we finish this, I'll repost it so you can see. We have shared it before, but we want to make sure you got the right information that goes along with the significant change slide. It's been a crazy day in my world, so apologies.
That was a positive.
It's a .06. That's, it's less than, less than 10, uh, 10. I'll pull it up for you so you can see. So it's noted here, excuse me, the significant changes. And what I just mentioned with the salary changes and the FTEs are noted up above here. And we can see that the coordinating dollar amounts are there. There were also non-FTE changes in salary lines in the non-union wages. 2% for admin and 2.5%. Plus there were a couple of steps for folks who are non-exempt or considered hourly workers. They're non-administrative. They're non, they're not higher, higher admin. And also to note that we are in negotiations with both the teachers' union and the support staff union. So steps have been included in the budget at the present wage levels, but no base increases have been included because we've not come to a agreement yet. As you can see, the medical insurance rate election changes and the different FTE changes are resulting in a total increase of $27,491 for medical. There was a medical election change that had an offset of $27,000. So that would have been higher with the 11.9% rate increase, but because there were some election changes, it actually came in lower. The other associated benefit costs, which would be like 403B matches, UEI, workers comp increases, New Hampshire retirement system increase percentages, all of those are coming in at $23,096. The SAU assessment is increased. You can see here at 66,520, I've asterisked that because we are in discussion at Dresden School District about cutting the budget. And the Dresden School District is absorbing the bulk of the increase from the SAU budget. So that number may be subject to change. That's why I've asterisked it. Pre-K tuition is a slight increase really due to the rate, the state of Vermont sets the rate every year. Overall, the supply and equipment lines are a slight decrease of 8,200 and 5,800 respectively. And then changes in special ed are as follows. The specialized therapies, which include testing, psychological services, physical and occupational therapy, all total are showing a decrease of $33,850, which Rep. mentioned earlier that there are changes going on that are in positive direction. While the summer programs adjusted only down by about 600 and the out-of-district tuition is projected to decrease by about 40,000. That corresponds with the specialized transportation for out-of-district at $19,000. The facilities and maintenance, property and service contracts have decreases totaling $17,200. A lot of that is because we're no longer having a pump separate case, okay? Transportation is budgeted with an increase for to and from school of about $26,350. Some are offset by field trips when you look at that as a rolled-up line. We are carrying monies for a half of a route expansion, which we can find another bus driver. We would like to put on another half a route to relieve the, I think it's Norwich Five. Norwich Five is a huge route and it's very full. And it goes over a, a, a large span of area. So that's why we're carrying that additional monies in that one. Site and building improvements, which is totally discretionary, is projecting a decrease of $83,000. I think everybody can understand why, we've done a lot here in the last two years. I should have done pictures of everything that we've accomplished, but I did not have time to do that. Debt service payments on our current projects. And then the heating upgrade lease payment is coming for its first payment this coming year for 25, 26. And that's the projected increase, we went for a 10-year on that. Transfer to food service accounts down 8,000 last year, or I should say, yeah, 23, 24. The program broke even, which is amazing, it's a great thing. Because the money that they give you from everywhere and everybody really doesn't, it's not designed to break even, so kudos to our food service staff, they did a great job. And then again, not included is the wage and benefit changes. So total changes at the bottom line is an addition of $152,7764, up and down. You know, some of it was absorbed, or 1.92%. Okay, moving right along, not gonna be here all night. Two different ways to look at the budget, they both tell different stories. This is a budget overview by function. Like I said, function is basically departmental. Do you have questions that I could answer along the way? Okay, I, I just can hear you, okay, thank you. The budget over, because if you do, feel free to stop me, okay? Budget overview by function is really like by department. And so you can see like all the 1100s are your regular education. We're down a bit there, technology, we're up a little bit, special education is up a little bit. Guidance and health services are rolled together, even though they are actually separate departments. We roll them up together when we report them. The curriculum, staff development, media and library are all four different separate departments, but they're rolled together when we report them. And then the school board and superintendent services are up a bit, as we mentioned. School administration, that's basically all of the information that is encompassed in the principals' departments. That also includes retiring costs for retirement payments, you know, after folks are gone. It also includes an uptick in coverage for the H, is it RA? I think it's the HRA. Yeah, the health reimbursement accounts is covered, is carried in that section and we did have an increase in that. And then you can look down through the line here. Building and site improvements, we discussed that one. Debt service and food service transfers, those two we discussed just briefly, netted against each other because again, they're rolled up into the same section when we report. Now, there's another way to look at the budget, which tells a different story. You can look at it by object. Object and subject, they're interchangeable depending on who you're talking to, they may call it subject. All 100s in the object section are salaries. All 200s are benefits, all 300s are purchased professional and technical services. All 400s are purchased property services, okay, and so on, you can read them there. The other purchased services in the 500s are usually like utilities, travel, communication, and items such as that. So as you can see, we're down a little bit in the teaching salaries, which we would be because one FTE was redirected, right, to other salary lines. So we're up in the other salary lines, which makes sense because we have increases in the areas of custodial, support staff or steps. We have increases in our non-union section and we moved that $50,000 out of the teaching line down into the district substitute line, okay? So also you can look at payroll taxes and benefits. And so those are all lumped together to report and those are up about almost 4%. The other significant ones, purchased property services are down 114. The other significant is dues, fees and debt. And again, that's the first lease debt payment coming in at 143. So that's the other significant one that's pointed out when you look at it as overview by object or subject. Yes, please?
Yes, absolutely. Maybe we should update that.
Sure.
So on that slide number seven.
Yep.
Function of our guidance and health serving.
Yes.
You decrease, but it doesn't correspond with the FTE ladder reduction, like the guidance roll or-
No, actually, I do know what that is off the top of my head. It was a change in election benefit of $27,000, so. So that's where the, that's where that election benefit changed that made the really big difference in the uptick of costs for health benefits. I think, sure.
Jimmy, you made a comment before on discretionary versus not. So if we were to look at this, you were drawing a broad, kind of said it was flat, if you exclude discretionary. So what numbers would you include on that or not on that?
On the discretionary?
Yeah, like either function or object, does it, like, how are you doing that now?
So.
Because are you excluding certain lines? Are you saying, well, debt service is off, like?
Right, if it's a-
Which ones would you say were your flat, non-discretionary?
Non-discretionary would be anything contracted, right, that we cannot break. So anything debt-related you cannot break, right? Anything union agreements or negotiated-
Oh, I see.
-agreements cannot be broken, so those are not discretionary. Anything required by state or federal law, not discretionary. So pretty much basically all your special education section is probably non-discretionary. Other than within those lines, discretionary pieces would be like travel, supplies, equipment. So most of your probably 600 and 700 object codes could be discretionary. And then discretionary would be maintenance in the capital areas, which are those lower ones. Because those are project-related, right, that we decide we're gonna do the floor, we're gonna do a bathroom, or we're gonna do new doors or anything like that, those are discretionary. Any of the contracts that we have to carry, like for the alarm system or for insurance. Yeah, thank you, Teresa. And anything like that would be in the service contract section. And so those would be non-discretionary because you, you have to do it in order to report to state or federal. Yeah, so, but we could come up with that number for you for the next meeting if you wanted to know what that number is.
I thought you had mentioned when you first had down your notebook and you had, I was wondering where you would call that data.
Oh, I went back and looked at the quick model. And so on the quick model, we had rolled up all the pre-K through six direct educational services and programming. And we had carved out down below the items that they didn't have control over, which would be SAU, out-of-district special ed, the capital projects, the, you know, those items. So I went to the quick model because I wanted to give you a comparison based on the budget guidelines discussion. But, but there are more discretionary lines within, you know, the regular program here within the school because supply lines, equipment lines, you know, those are all discretionary. I have seen school districts where, you know, large out-of-district placement costs have moved in and they've frozen budgets and stopped spending, right? I mean, you know, you then may do with what you have, right? So, right, there were, it can be used in different ways.
I was wondering where you got that.
Yes.
Because you clearly had a-
Yes, I was doing the math over there based on, because I wanted to be able to give you a comparison on the guideline. Right? Yes.
I'm just wondering, you noted that we didn't, you didn't include the negotiated wage changes. How much of an impact does that have?
I won't know because we haven't come to an agreement.
And then when is that bringing expected or?
I don't know.
So it isn't included?
It's not included, no.
And the impact that will have is not included?
Correct, yeah.
So it's an important point, sorry to interrupt, but basically, just so everyone's clear. So we do not have, this year we're re-entering into negotiation with regular ed and-
Teachers and support.
Teachers and support, right? You know, so these are, right now, because the contract, so what will happen now is this one from last year, right? So those of us that have been on the board for a while, all of a sudden you hear people like Tom Cannon and others and you'll say like, you have to pay attention. Because what happens is that the next year, we'll have to basically catch up on those items. So those things that, the, the, the impact of the extra, not just the steps, but what actually increases will impact next year's budget.
It could, depending on, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, what I would say though is we, we are doing everything that we can to try to wrap up negotiations and trying to be able to have a number to plug into the budget. So definitely with support staff earlier this evening, met with teachers just a few days before that. And we've got a schedule in place that is trying to drive us to having negotiated settlements in time and according to this budget.
And is that just done every, any two years or is it done every, is it just on a polling basis?
No, it depends on what both sides can agree to for a duration of contract. And there is sufficient, I would say that there's sufficient uncertainty in Vermont's education funding formula that there's, there's a hesitancy to engage in a multi-year-
I see.
Contracts.
Interesting.
The most recent year contract, that was a two-year contract, right?
Yes, correct.
But for regular ed, but it was almost two years and over years, it dragged on for a long time. So we are already, everyone was high-fiving that we'd just finished our negotiations. But we have almost entered negotiations immediately again. The good news is we just agreed to a contract.
I will say that we're in a much better place this year than we have been in past years because we don't have multiple years that we're trying to catch up on. We are calm, but so for 24, 25, we're calm in our budget, you know? So that's a great place for us now, right now. And if we can come to an agreement prior to the budget, you know, having to go be ratified, that's great. What I will say is steps are included at the present wage levels. So a portion of what you negotiate is included.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I would add just one more comment. There are many examples of Vermont's education funding system where the state has the authority and we have the accountability. And so if you're sitting there wondering, geez, you knew the budget was coming up and now you're in negotiations, why didn't you take care of this beforehand? Part of what informs us is the Tax Commissioner's so-called December 1st letter, which gives the outlook for the education fund and that just came out Monday. And so it is very hard, in my opinion, as one of the negotiating committee, it's very hard to formulate an offer absent that letter about the state of the current education fund. And so we've only had 48 hours of that letter and it goes to give the one offer with it. But, you know, it, it's hard to start that process any faster than that.
The timing that they give you is not often. Okay, great questions, thank you. I'm on slide nine, for those of you who are following on paper. This is-
Yeah, I just have one question on slide eight.
Yes.
I read the, the changes document.
Yeah.
I see money flowing from a teacher salary object code to the other salaries, exactly the way that you described.
Yeah.
In the absence of exhibit 11, where does that position come? Like, does, does, do we have a hypothesis about what teacher, what, what you're moving to pick up with substitute?
I don't know exactly where it came from.
Maybe ask another way, because I feel the same question was, is the section are gonna stay the same at 19?
Correct.
But we're losing one FTE. Yes. So I guess is, most of us think about teachers, you think about a regular full-time teacher per classroom. So maybe that, I think that might be what you're-
Right, there's 21 seconds. Pre-K, two to one.
Sorry. But we're staying, the sections are staying the same, we're not reducing a section, but we're reducing FTE.
We carried an FTE to follow the returning rules this year. Next year, this maybe we won't have during the loop to our special ed. But right now, we, for this year, we have a position within our budget that is a teaching position. But because we are out of returning the reading, it's not, it's not in the classroom. Position is on returning, we bump it to 12. Out in the classroom, position is on returning, but the next year, instead of carrying that over, we're moving it into that substitute.
Right. So it's just a redirection, because it's, it was, it will be a vacancy. It's projected to be a vacancy.
So is that, that one section is always gonna be covered at any one time by a substitute?
No, it just so happened to work out that way for this year.
We had a smaller than expected.
Class, yeah.
So we were able, instead of hiring more in about maternity, just.
But in the two, oh, that, so this person, that were actually existing, if we were even going to. So stated another way, you're accumulating vacancy savings this year, and then you're employing that.
We would have, had there not been so many outages for different maternity's.
Okay, fair enough, I understand, thank you.
So basically the FTE is sitting up here, but what's being done with that FTE is the exact same thing as what we're now budgeting it for. That makes sense.
It's just being like super blunt.
Yeah.
People are wondering at home on the.
I mean, I could have let, we could have left it up top.
And when we're talking about moving from a regular ed FTE to the substitute line, you're not doing a reduction force of a person that already works here.
No.
Yeah, just, yeah, make sure everybody understands that.
Yeah, understood. And like I said, it could have been, we talked about whether we leave it up top
Yeah.
or not, right? Um, because the dollar amounts were similar. Um, so it, it was just a matter of really being transparent about what we're trying to cover, because it's, it's an issue. Um, you know, and it's an issue in all of our schools. Um, so we were being transparent with, with, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, and, and I don't know if you wanna say God forbid, or, or kudos, whatever, right? If we gain another thirty kids in one area, you know, then it might shift back up, right?
Budget is a player.
That's right, yeah, at the snapshot in time, right? Yeah. Okay. All right, good, moving on, okay.
Um, are, are we projecting only two kindergarten classes next year?
We're not sure, because that's done in August.
So we're graduating a small class that has only two sixth grade. If we don't also have a two-section kindergarten, aren't we reducing the number of sections from what we currently have?
Look at slide four.
I'm sorry.
Slide four, because I saw you guys giving the section projections. We're projecting three sections for kindergarten.
We are projecting three sections for kindergarten, so I'm just. So what about this fourth grade only having two, and current, the third grade has, and am I missing, what am I missing?
I'm sorry, that was going backwards. It's probably going to shift based on where the need is for the teacher. Right? Based on class sizes.
Right, but right now, we, I'm not. Yeah, but we, we're, are we not actually reducing them?
So you have to think about it differently, because you're thinking about it in actual kid numbers. This is the projected number, using the formula Jamie has to say what our survival rate is, and what we project for the kids for next year. So it changes the numbers a little bit, some cohorts are playing through games, some students, some are moves. So that fluctuation is, the FTE is changing a bit. And then when we get closer to the actual sphere, and look at, we have to roll whole tab, brackets, and things like just this. The number of FTEs is exactly the same, they won't stay in those sections, because we know that there's some fluctuation. So I, I wouldn't get too stuck on.
No, it's supposed to be.
Where they are now, as, knowing overall, we have the same number of staff who teach the same number of students each year.
Correct. Okay.
But the number to jump, right, so it's like, the, the, the one from, so your, you know, your grade one was forty-four this year.
Yeah.
If you look at next year, grade two is forty-three, so it means that that grade one lost a kid.
Yeah.
And it's based on historical data, right?
It's not a perfect science, yeah.
So the forty-seven in grade three becomes the forty-nine in grade four, so that's why it's not to get, you know, to keep the same sections, or we can talk about this, but the next slide, the next column is really how we might move some FTEs around based on the class sizes.
Right, and I'm, I'm looking at that, and that's, I think, where my yeah.
You're realistically, we found.
We just don't know.
We found, I think, first grade next year, we know pattern. Three, four, right, so we know.
Yeah, okay. That's why it's not determinate to August. We just do a what-if, to be sure that we're carrying enough bodies. Because we were tasked with, in the budget guidelines in August, looking at potential cuts of, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
But so far, the budget as it stands is, has only half twenty-one sections, and we're budgeting for twenty-one sections. Even if they might get.
Classroom sections, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, slide, I don't know why I'm not anymore. It's going. That's the hardest thing, listen, for, it, yeah, it gets worse when you get to the high school with sections and FTEs, and, oh my god. It's, I would not want that drawn, okay, I don't want that drawn. Of figuring out how many FTEs you need for every, you know, whatever class. Um, all right, so, this is off the press, this Gary mentioned, and somebody else, uh, oh, Michael mentioned. We got the December first, uh, commissioner, is, yeah, commissioner's letter, yes, the, Jack's commissioner's letter, yes. And thanks to Neil, who sent it out for me to have, thank you, because the state hasn't yet. And so, uh, we're showing, this is a early draft projection of both revenues and where the tax rate assessment very early on may, may come out. On nine, however, what we're predominantly looking at is the Marion Cross School assessment is, as we've discussed, the Dresden assessment is early um, and does not include support staff negotiations or service staff negotiations. There will be two articles in Dresden for both of those union negotiations. I don't have the numbers. Um, I hopefully will have the numbers soon, because the Dresden board needs to ratify the support staff, and the service staff hasn't been agreed upon yet. But the service staff one is usually pretty small, it's probably like a twenty thousand dollar. I don't, okay? Uh, revenues, we're projecting here, um, two tuition incomes, those, and that can be dangerous, but if they don't come to fruition by next June, we'll adjust that down and change the homestead liability. Um, interest on investments, it's still projected to be pretty stable through next year by the economists. Other local is um, basically rent, or earned rent that we get from the building. Um, then vocational aid, I'm projecting forward what we have now, because nobody has sent out any numbers from the state yet. Same with transportation aid. Um, the census block grant is true, we did get that from the state, so that increase of a hundred and thirty-four thousand is legitimate. The spec ed extraordinary aid is uh, based on an early projection from the state, that can change, depending on circumstantial information and data. Uh, essential early ed, I'm projecting forward, because again, I have the data from the state. And the ELL categorical aid will most likely not change, that should be a pretty good number, fifty thousand. Um, we have no more transfers from construction fund. That monies came to us, oh god, twenty-two years ago, twenty years ago, was invested over twenty years, refused to offset the costs that were born in Dresden, through doing all the um, updates to the buildings over there. We drew our last hundred and forty-nine thousand some odd dollars last year. I think Teresa transferred the last amount in the little interest, how much was that, like forty, you know, forty-eight dollars? Okay. So that got transferred to, and that account is close. Um, from prior year fund balance, uh, that's a projection, anything in salmon colored means because it don't exactly have perfect numbers. Um, I'm pretty confident that that, that is pretty close. We are almost done with the Norwich audit. And so we should have those numbers, I'm hoping we'll have, I don't know, hope for today, but yeah, they, we're waiting on the actuarials in order to close the audit, and we don't do the actuary things for the audit, so we're waiting on them, and then they can close the audit. We'll have it for the January meeting, I'm sure. Okay, anyway, let's flip to the next page, because that goes with this page. You then carry forward the assessments, less revenues and fund balance, which we just talked about, is all, just shot at two million dollars. Uh, so education spending comes out at fourteen million, six twenty-one, six twenty-two. Uh, or we're up a hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars, we're just over one percent. Um, the uh, long-term weighted average daily membership is not ratified at this point. We're carrying forward what we had last year, eight twenty-eight point eighty-nine. Um, I don't know when that number's coming, I asked today if they have an idea, and I didn't get that. I got that I hadn't missed anything, but I don't know what the numbers. Um, the next section that you're looking at is excess spending threshold. Right now, we have an exemption from that, because we're an interstate agreement, we're an interstate school district. Um, so I didn't carry any of that forward. And then the per people figure for calculating tax rate review that we're looking at is seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, which will be up two hundred and seventy dollars, or one point one eight percent as represented in the front. Um, the base amount yield is in salmon, because that comes from the commissioner's December first letter. It is absolutely subject to change, last year, I think it changed, I don't know, four times. Um, they didn't set it until June, so um, hold on, and we'll figure out what happens, right? So you carry that forward, the district spending adjustment is there. The equalized homestead tax, less the twenty-one cent discount, which was a fifteen cent discount. But because there's a ratio that adjusts that in order to make us all equal in Vermont, it's a complicated formula, anyway. Uh, that gives us a twenty-one cent discount again. Otherwise, you can see what the homestead tax would be without the discount. Uh, then we adjust that by the common level appraisal, which is also subject to change, because we're in the middle of a rebound, it didn't get finalized last year. Right now, they're projecting our CLA at sixty-two percent. It's then adjusted by seventy-two percent, which is the state adjustment, which brings us to eighty-six point eleven percent. And so you adjust the rate up above of a dollar eighty-five, because we're not at a hundred percent. And then we get our estimated nominal tax rate with discount of two dollars and fifteen cents uh, per hundred. So that's right now, based on this year's rate, um, a reduction of seventeen and a half cents. Again, don't get too excited too quickly. Um, Dresden's budget's not set, there are two more articles that will have a relative bearing on that. The ADM is not set, the base amount has not been set, and the CLA has not been set. But early indicator is there. Um, sensitivity percentage is two point eight eight percent. That is down as well, and then the non-residential tax rate is actually up two cents. Projected to be up two cents. Um, so that is the new complicated formula, subject to change at the state level.
So maybe we just take off the, put up in it for a second.
Yeah.
So the CLA, right, so last year was it was sixty-seven percent.
Fifty-seven.
And this year, it dropped to sixty-two percent, this is, this is not factoring in the new appraisal. So obviously, it's basically saying our property in origin way under appraised compared to the average in Vermont, just so everyone who's listening understands that is important, because it's a statewide education funding rate, that's assuming that everyone is paying the same, has the same value of property, no matter where you live, depending on where it's assessed at, so that's why you didn't see it. Anyways, this year, though, I, I was actually confused, because I'm like, I thought the eighty-six percent was because of our reassessment, or reappraisal. It's not.
Right.
So the eighty-six, so that means if you're fully appraised, you're actually over a hundred percent.
Yes.
Ideally, if you were appraised, if your house, if everyone's house was appraised at the proper value, it should be a hundred percent, and that's why every year, we've been going down, because we haven't done appraisal in town for ten years. But, and then once you drop, you're supposed to get your creative level, so this year, they're doing this, and maybe I'll turn it over to Neil now, because basically now, the sixty-two percent is actually eighty-six percent, which makes no sense, because back for the past ten years, if you had a CLA of eighty-six percent, you're doing pretty well, like, you're, you're a little bit below the averages, but it's not critical, and certainly not needing a creative appraisal. Once we get down to the, below seventy percent, that's when the bells go off, and everyone's like, you need to get reappraised. So I'm actually confused why it's not eighty-five, because it looks like that's actually helped them a lot overall, but of course, then you're also dealing with the yield, which of course dropped as well. The yield's lower than last year, because the CLA.
But it was adjusted.
So here, right, so, um, uh, they, they made things slightly more complicated by introducing this concept of what's called statewide adjustments. Statewide adjustment, if I'm understanding it correctly, looks like the aggregate um change in CLA value of this state's budget. So the, the state's grand list value compared to what um, the, those properties are valued at, for the entire state. So you can consider this figure, which I think is seventy, it's seventy-two percent.
Yeah.
That's, consider that to be like the H CLA.
Yeah.
And that's not because basically the entire state is under assessed, because that's, you know, assessing.
Yeah, I mean, if you look, if you combine like all of the properties from all of the towns all across the state, and aggregate it all together, and look at the, the the aggregated value of all of those properties, yes, the, the calculation says that you're um, undervalued by twenty, twenty real percent. Right, so it gives you a state CLA of seventy-two percent. You gotta be really careful, like, you can't, so they're now using that state CLA number to adjust some figures in the traditional formula. So that, that figure is um, being used to manipulate the yield number. All right, and so it's getting divided into the yield number, so seventy-two percent divided into what would have been, what is a, a higher yield number, so the real yield number, if I'm doing my math right, is like eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety something, right? So a dramatic increase from last year. And I would attribute that to two things, one is, we've heard that the revenue coming into the education fund has increased because of an increase in consumption tax revenue. So we sales a new tax, so Vermonters, they're buying stuff online and all kinds of good stuff, they're generating more sales tax revenue than we have. On the other side of things, there has been, uh, so in order for the tax commissioner to come up with this yield number, they surveyed school districts all across Vermont, and said, hey, where are you at with your budgeting right now? What do your budgets look like, what do you think you're gonna be putting forward? School districts supplied all that information, collectively, it looks like uh, and board members have gotten this message, school officials have gotten the message, let's keep spending down. So you've got two things going on, you've got increased revenue into the ed fund, and decreased obligation in the form of what we think school budgets are gonna be, right? Resulted in a higher yield number, almost eleven thousand, almost twelve thousand dollars. Because of the change in the formula, however, that number that you saw on the tax commissioner's letter was eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, because you take that larger yield number, and you apply this new statewide adjustment to it, to get this smaller number. At the end of the day, right, if we took away this statewide adjustment, and we went with the calculation as it was last year, you would end up with the exact same tax rate, so why they do, because now we get reassessed. Because I think what they were trying to do was alleviate these wild swings in CLA year to year, they're trying to smooth things out by coming up with this statewide adjustment thing, so statewide adjustment gets applied to the property yield number, it gets applied to our sense discounts.
Yeah.
And it also gets applied to our local CLA. We were to take all that stuff out, at the end of the day, we'd still end up with the exact same tax rate that we calculated here. And so you can't compare this new eighty-six percent CLA. And so you can't compare this new 86% CLA number with last year's CLA. It didn't really go up. It went down. It went down to 62%. Or it's forecast to go down to 62%, but the application of this adjustment factor makes it look like it might.
So if I were, I try to imagine um, our good townsfolk trying to follow along. They're watching on Zoom, having their group chat at home and they thought, I had it, I was with it until line 14. Is it fair, even very simple, think of it as the common level appraisal is the relationship of our property values to the market. The next percentage is the relationship of everybody's town, every town's relationship to the market.
Right. Uh, I think so. I, um, let me say it.
Can I read what the states said?
I'm not sure that.
No, it might, okay. So, so section 13 of the yield bill defines statewide adjustment. As the ratio of the aggregate education property tax grand list of all municipalities. To the aggregate value of the equalized education property tax grand list of all municipalities, right? So, so that, that SA, right, state adjustment that they're putting through on all three of those pieces. Are to try to bring about some type of equalization. Through the property values that are all, they're skewed all over the place right now. Because some have been adjusted by um, reevaluations and some have not.
Right, but I think to answer Michael's question, right? The way that I interpret that 86% is that is our CLA in comparison to the state level CLA. And so that's why you can't take last year's, you know, 67 compared to this year's 86 because they're at, they're two different calculations.
And.
They represent two different.
Two different changes.
To Jared's question, there are some towns that are over 100. There are 116, 112, there are 108.
Because if we were, if we were 62 and now we get reappraised, now the same to go back to 100. Then you put the 70% thing on there, you're going to be like 1.5.
Who knows, which is what some of these are, unless they put a cap in.
Well, I guess. I guess the only comment I make is, you know, lots of public policy makers. In decisions, there's the way it is and the way it gets, right? They're, they're different things. And so to me, um, one of the things I just think about is, hey, the way it is. Is currently, given where we're at in the budget process, uh, the change is an up of about 1.18%. Which to me, everything I see on slide nine and 10 says that we're being very responsible so far. As the school board when it comes to the budget. The way it feels. Uh, I can't control what state policymakers do once they come back together a month later. Whether they make decisions that might cost lower residents money. And then with the CLA, when the grand list gets reassessed, everybody's relationship to their tax bill is going to change. Based on the reassessment of their house and then the relationship of the value of their home to everybody else's. And that's going to scramble things in ways that might make some people feel good, it might make some people feel really bad. And it's going to take our overall tax rate and drop it because the rate goes down as the values go up, even though you're still paying your money. And so I just try to stay pretty focused on, hey, here's the increase in actual spending. In the aggregate or on a per pupil basis, that's what we can control. That's what's something that's really far out of our control as a board.
I will note the number in 15B. I'm sorry, I'm looking at it and it's not correct, but I'll fix that here, so I.
And we're no longer subject to the threshold, right?
At this point in time, no.
Yeah, we, um, Jamie inquired with the state, um, and the AOE had responded back. That because of our status as an interstate school district, we are not subject to the excess spending threshold.
I have it in writing.
Otherwise, that would be right. So, right, so I think, I mean, um, uh, I will, you know, I do think there's a little, there, there's a tiny little bit of a good story here. And, and that is that we are at this moment in time looking at a reduction in the tax rates from last year.
I've been bored now for how many years? I've never seen a real system deposit. Then allow me to follow that up.
Bring us down.
Last year's increase was 16%.
I, I, I think that I probably, you know, there's, you know, maybe I would have quit if we were looking at another increase on top of that this year, like. But yeah, you know.
Well, I do think to that point, we have to also keep in mind that we are also benefiting from both lower Dresden budgets. Even our other budgets, just because we have let all of the capital spending and the debt service go away. That at some point we'll need to come back online, right? I mean, we just retired all the debt for the middle school and high school for those 20 and things. So that's why we're kind of getting very low increases as well. And at some point, we'll need to start spending unless we just have everything crumbled, right?
Right, and sorry, but the, and the other point that I want to make sure that we, that voters understand, right? Is that one of the prime reasons why we're getting this decrease of the tax rate from last year. Is this CENTS discount.
Yeah.
That we've been afforded because we got walloped by the teams and student waste, right? That discount's going away. So the relief that we're seeing here is because of that primarily. And that ain't going to be with us forever.
I want to update that part of the slide. 15B, I know, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it here and I know 15B. That didn't carry across. Because the difference between 260 and 239 is not set in the center.
So I mean, you know, to summarize the budget, I guess, I've been, I apologize, I missed the last meeting, but. I think to Neil's point here, I think that what we can control, and Michael said too, is our spending. And I think given all the uncertainty, the best we can do is continue to, you know, really try to stay to the flat budget. And I thank Sean for, and everybody for just kind of keeping things, the lid on things now. And then frankly, is this, the percent discount comes off over the rest of the years. I think in order to kind of right-size things without actually cutting people, right? Is at least if we keep things flat, which is also hard to do, right? Because everything's going to happen in price, right? Contracts going up, prices are going up steadily. So it's not, I always say a flat budget is actually a downwaver, right? It's like healthcare goes up all the time, you can't just, at some point, people cut stuff happening, so. And so I think this would be a pretty good budget process of the art.
I, I would just, I, I agree with that, though one of my tableways from this budget presentation is that. The price tag will go up because we have four active negotiations right now, right? So this provides base. Those four negotiations will lead to base increases that will carry over the sort of time and the discount is temporary. Right, here's, there's income pressure on. Sorry.
That'd be, otherwise known as a headwind.
Yes.
Any other comments, board members?
Well, and my, I shouldn't say, but to go along with that, right? One of my worries, while things look better than I anticipated at this stage. There's an opportunity here that we could chew up this entire decrease. With a couple of negotiated settlements here, some stuff on the other side of the river. Um, and then suddenly, we're not standing in front of voters saying, if your taxes went down, say, I don't know, we stayed about the same. So I just, I, I think we've done a great, we're done at this point, I think, but the work's not done yet.
Up to the public, yes.
I'm curious what the impact on the budget is with increases or decreases in tuitioning students. Um, and it was mentioned, there were some like two students coming in. And I ask that in part because word on certain streets is that there are other school systems that are. Talking about significant cuts to the programming that they're offering. And parents are asking about tuitioning in to Marion Cross. So is, is that something that is a revenue source that we can explore? Can we advocate for that? Is that a conflict of some kind of public school interest? To be like, hey, over here, we're still great, come. Um, I'm just, I don't know what that, that scene is and I would love to have a better understanding of. What the tuitioning in looks like in terms of what it does to our budget and outlooks.
Yeah, well, Jamie answered, I think, you know, the line is the tuition income is going up by 20 grand. So, but I will, but then to your overall question, keep me honest here, everyone, but I think. I know Julie at the high school, they actually go to a day where you're kind of selling your school and these things. And yes, it's a little bit of a fine line between outright just capitalism saying, come to our school versus keeping it on. But I think there is, at least for an administration, listening to the work that you've done over the past few years, the goal is to get more tuitioning students. To come to hand over RMS, MCS, like absolutely. I don't think there's, the more the better, right? Because we can keep more kids here.
So revenue is your friend, right, in most instances. You know, there are tons when revenue income from tuition may not be your friend. But, uh, you know, you don't really, you don't, you don't look at those directly right off. But, um, you, you can, you want to be able to take as many students as you can fit. Without triggering having to do another section, right? Because, you know, just as an average cost to put on another certified teaching section. Is probably at the minimum 80,000 upwards to 120, right? Depending on where the teacher hits on the scale, what level of health benefit, right? So, so where you have capacity within your class sizes, absolutely. I think, um, sans any, you know, additional special education or any other type of cost that might go along with the kid. You know, that can absolutely help offset your rate. Because it lowers your assessment burden, right? That dollar amount of any revenue that comes in lowers the assessment amount of activities. So, so I'll tell you what, at most high schools in New Hampshire anyway. It is absolutely a tuition revenue game, especially as schools over there are declining in population.
Eric, I might, let me just add to that. So, yeah, revenue's good. The, uh, if we're focusing, so there's a couple of things there that just. The income that you could possibly get by having kids tuitioned to a high school. You know, more, which we'll see a portion of that, but we don't get all of that, right? We're talking specifically though about tuitioning kids into Marion Cross, a little bit of a different story. And there's a couple of issues there that make it difficult for Marion Cross to see, I think, any substantial decline in that. Um, number one is we are the second, we have the second highest per pupil spending in the state. Which means that our tuition rate's going to be above, uh, except for that one other school. Which is to ignore the rest, actually, that every other school's going to have a lower tuition rate than we are for tuition purposes. The second thing is for those districts where those families might be feeling like they want to make a choice. To send their kids somewhere because their local public school has had to go through some cuts in order to get a budget to pass. Those families would have to fund that tuition revenue on their own. The tax dollars don't come with that kid, so they'd be, they'd be pulling, they'd still be paying taxes in their hometown. But they'd be funding that tuition completely out of their own pockets to have that student come back. And so those two things, I think, are probably unlikely to, to net us a lot, but I would love to be surprised.
Every little bit, Alex. Right, how about?
On slide four, quickly, I just want to see the sections. So it looks like we'll probably go with the. The sections on the right.
You wouldn't know until August.
If that's kind of the plan right now, and I guess the question there is, is obviously. You know, our policy kind of says for K through three of 14, 22, 16, 18, and 17 is optimal now, right? And then, so it does look like grade one is pretty small. Because even if you, if you took that to two sections, you'd be a 17, 18, 17 in one section, 18 in another. Like, are we kind of just, is that just a?
We just carried over, so. Okay, likely that we would let grade be 21 or another move down to 120. Like, it's like, I think we could, we're going to do this again to my first.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So it's, yeah, so it sounds like, okay.
It's just an exercise. Next year, it's going to present and.
Just because I know from a budget perspective, we get a lot of towns, people that talk about how small the class is.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we already do something like 112 kids per class.
Well, that's why there's three different, I mean, there's two different, um, projections.
It probably makes sense if it came up like all times here, just change it.
Okay.
We're not worth this game anyway.
Sure.
Just need the next year's grade one, two sections, the next year's grade three, two sections.
You want to tell me the what-if scenario you'd like to have all of them?
So grade three would still be 13 and 14, though, which would still be really small. Unfortunately, you're right on the cusp here, probably unfortunately, where it's like, this.
Yeah.
Yeah, grade three would be 21, one section of 21 to 21, and then it comes down to you make, you make, right? Who's in that class and what the teacher's like and, right, like. Okay, but so it sounds like we do have a little bit of like. Flexibility here in this, and then we actually have a little bit of conservatism in the numbers with regards to. We're not on the cusp of any one class blowing up too big and we're not going to be offshore all of a sudden, somebody's going to be way too big. It sounds like you kind of moved somebody if you need to.
We tried to do, present a budget where we could have sold something that was moving. I think we're going to be coming back in August and saying, I have to hire another section of the next way.
That was kind of where my question was. It sounds like there's conservatism to this as far as the sections versus being.
Okay, can I go to slide 11 now? Just because I know I'm going to have to get up there Friday tomorrow morning, we're going to snow call.
Just call it now.
No, I can't. And I want to show this picture. Look at that beautiful picture of that amazing xylophone. In all its glory and color, okay. So this is just to wrap it up, and you guys have had a great conversation tonight. I think it's been wonderful with everybody. You know, the what-if budget reduction scenarios we talked about, we, we, I think we have talked that through to the sun. We also talked about expanded pre-K opportunities. We talked about that early on. Uh, we really have some space constraints here in order to take a look at that. And that absolutely would also add to the budget and the bottom line, so we've kind of pulled back a little bit from that. We also went through the budgeting process and talked about some strategic plan initiatives. The asterisk on the SAU 70 increase comes into play because we're looking at, um, the, uh, getting a CIP done. Capital Improvement Plan with cost out done, and it's via the SAU 70 assessment. Um, that includes Marion Cross in it. So some of that increase that Marion Cross is seeing there is twofold. Uh, it's because of that CIP plan from the strategic plan in there and also because of a, um. A surplus carryover has dried out from prior years. The other piece that was discussed at all the tables of the schools, uh, budget committees in the district. Was a potential district social worker in conversation with all of the different, um. Budget committees we have placed that on hold for this upcoming year. Although I will say that each one of the different principals at all of our SAU 70, um, school districts. Do have some ideas, um, and some alternative, uh, thoughts in place to deal with anything in that field. And then I just wanted to share some of the specifics, the outdoor classroom. Uh, the outdoor classrooms that they're using here on the environmental programs and the kids you can see. They're learning about, it looks like a black cricket and some kind of uh, some kind of, I don't know, maybe seed pods, maybe? And then, uh, I loved it today as I was putting this together, because as they mentioned, we just got the other information on Monday, late on Monday afternoon. I asked Karen Wright to send me some of the pictures because I wasn't able to be here. And they're amazing. I might, I want to put some more on everything. Uh, the kids playing on the playground and there's movies and it's just, they're having a blast. They're having an absolute blast and I loved seeing that because I have to tell you, out of all the projects, yes, that one gave me more brillo than any. Including this up here. So, um, I'm glad it's open and in place. We do have a couple of other things that we're still working on uh for back there. And the, the one other project that got fully funded by Grant is um well underway with the, uh, what is she called? She has a great name for it. No, compost palace, yes. The compost palace, which we got approved uh beyond town and they actually poured, I think they prepped the base and poured the concrete and the structure should be going up within the next week or two. Right? Yeah, it's exciting. Yeah, we got more forks today because the elf delivered him last night and I don't know what time it has. Going left here, seven, okay. So that is it for us today. I'll get those, uh, I'm gonna take a two minute when you move forward and I'll repost the right exhibit and re-pump the right uh F T E in this and post it right back up. So if anybody wants to go take a ten minute, go back here and walk it, it'll be there. Takes two seconds to do this. Okay, apologies again. All right, any other questions? I love the xylophone, I love the play. All right, you know, Karen, it's back over you, Derek.
All right, thank you for all the work on that.
Yeah, it's a team effort with all of us.
Um. Okay, I think for uh, you hear from the future reports already given, I think we're going to our discussion.
We need to do one more.
Oh, yes, there are. I, I don't know that you need to discuss them other than just take a quick look.
I was gonna say, it's just a.
There's nothing out of the ordinary.
Um, just at the point of order, the select board has not yet set the day and time of delivery session.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
I recommend that they take it up next week and I don't know if they will. Follow them there.
I think I did put draft on that, right? Okay, okay, good. No, I will not. I will uh double check with them and I know that uh Miranda's been in uh in contact with Ryan, so.
Sir, I just have one question on the one article. I thought the chair got a little bonus in salary, no?
Only in dress.
Only a question, okay. Thank you. I just was confused. I wanted to make sure Derek got it if he was supposed to, because it wasn't supposed to, because it's more an article.
Last year, we actually did increase our salaries a little bit. This is purely for fun. Okay, uh, onwards, let's see. Okay, so who want to visit? Uh, if you're, maybe just starting with the, the, the.
I think you and I, we've been doing it for a while because I think not enough people were here last time to properly assign.
Uh, so we, you know, you.
You didn't want to volunteer?
I, I mean.
I haven't done it in a while. I'm happy to take my shift.
I can do it, yeah. I like that.
And I don't know what, I honestly don't recall what you're approving. You're approving in Norwich, obviously. Are you doing dress in tip?
On the S A U. You and I are doing.
I can say.
Is it time to switch that?
Actually, we're doing.
S A U, S A U.
Yeah, so it's Norwich and S A U.
I won't open my mouth too loud.
Yeah, keep us, keep us S A U in Norwich for a while.
Okay. Nobody wants to do dress.
Okay, and so that's starting now.
It will be uh with next week.
Okay.
This week should be done.
Okay, uh, reading the policies. We've got the second reading of all of these policies listed and the third reading of our uh district employee non-resident student policy. Uh, Paul just, I missed our last meeting. Uh, I know that the, obviously the upper policies, B B B, all these are been discussed extensively at all the other board meetings. Do we have any comments on these? Because I believe we're, we are going to be, must be a more changes. We are going to be improving all of these policies. The second and the third reading. So why don't we start the second reading policies? Does anybody have any comments or questions or things that have changed on those policies? You have to approve district-wide law, so everything can be a lot of things. And then, um, probably the most important policy is our district employee, non-resident student policy, which is giving uh teachers the ability to, they are out of district to have their kids come here. I know we went through a third reading. I know Jace, I don't think here tonight has been very helpful drafting that policy. Is there anything on there that is still outstanding or people? Yeah, I apologize, I'm not sure if we have discussed this. We seemingly discussed this at the last meeting, but.
I, I, so I'm not sure what changed during the previous reading and this previous reading, but um, one thing that I think we need to discuss is that in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph that says non-resident students may continue to enroll in district schools until grade six. And I know that we have been discussing the possibility of potentially moving grade six over to Hanover at some point. So we may want to consider boarding that just says until graduation for Marion Cross or something along those lines.
So maybe we can have it makes sense. It'd be pretty easy modification. You want to just adopt this as amended, maybe?
I'm still, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm still a little bit uncomfortable. Do you have a superintendent with make a determination as to which children would get to join the pool if they had more than would be able to be absorbed in a given unit? Right? If you had four kids and you only had three possible seats. I understand that it's a, the superintendent's discretion, but I I'm not sure that the optics of accepting three children and rejecting a fourth without any real reason are great. And I wonder if we can do it based on teacher seniority or something else, but I feel that this may need to be a little more fleshed out.
Or we can kind of first come, first served.
Well, but all of the applications are due by a certain date. So I guess if you're a lay higher, then that's understandable, but if these are all longstanding teachers.
I, I thought Jay was meant to do a criteria similar to what we do for the pre-k. Um, I mean, it was my understanding that we requested that to get him out of the situation of having to make that awkward decision. And that we requested criteria similar to what we have for pre-k.
And I mean, it's still a different aggression. But there is some sort of process.
I know Jay wanted to talk to me about.
Terrible procedure then of policy.
Right, that's why, right.
We've approved a policy, understand that Jay would do that. I mean, I think it's important, just going on record, that we do need to be able to limit this and make the policy. Again, we are going above and beyond offering this and that all of a sudden something happens and it means, like Jamie was just saying, that we get that one person, that would do another section, right? That's like, connect that.
Okay, I still, I'm still uncomfortable with the fact that we reevaluated this every year, but the the children who are already in will stay until the end, but also their siblings can then attend. So if we let in a pre-k child and now we then has seven more children, we're still going to be on the hook for this for the next, you know, twenty-five years, right? I'm not sure that I would agree to allow siblings in automatically, you know, for, for I would allow siblings in if the policy had been discontinued.
Do you want to pull?
Maybe we pull this one, pick one of ours.
That was our position last time.
Yeah.
My ears are.
I mean, it's gonna get done. We will get something here. I think it's just a matter of, it's most important to done, you know, by the next school year, so we have time.
Can I qualify this also by saying I realize these are nitpicky things and in reality, we're never going to have a teacher that joins in pre-k and then, you know, has eight children, eight or all that, but these are things that I worry about when putting in this sort of blanket policy that may affect the school for years to come, even years to come.
I know, I would say I'm not finding a separate lot of paragraphs, I just think furthermore, should this policy be discontinued? Symptoms of non-residential students admitted under this policy will be considered for consent to come to district school. So it feels less like a binding promise and one like, uh, here they go.
I'd rather sit here, who's gonna do this?
Yeah, I wonder, but um, I mean, I will admit, right, I, uh, I, there is a, there's a need for this and I think there's a benefit to Marion Cross for this, but I do share something like college concerns, like, I I can, I can foresee a future with a board that doesn't have me on it and they're gonna, it's, they're gonna have a really sticky situation to deal with. And I'm trying not to put that on that future board and, yeah. And so, like, I don't think it needs to fall all on you. Like, I, I, I wonder if there ought to be just like a, maybe a you know, enhanced policy committee, but almost includes the full board. Just to try to talk through some of these things and see if we can figure out a path forward or some of this stuff, but not have to be just a pair of palm, can I figure this out, Jay?
Okay. One more thing, Derek, sorry.
Yeah.
We need a period. I have to underline to that at the bottom of the.
At least it are concerned.
I like, I like the easy fix. Um, just one question of, for, like, I guess for Robin and probably the two of you. When does this policy need to be in place to help with recruiting and hiring? Like by the January meeting, by the March, you know, I just.
Probably by March, I would say. Earlier, earlier, February, start. Vacancies start coming up.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're adhering to that timeline because if we're doing this to be helpful, we should make sure that we're doing it to be helpful.
Right.
Well, maybe, you know, even if we do a Zoom meeting, right, where everybody's, if this sort of, then we can do this, you know, reading the policy. Have you tried the dates, I call everybody like during the daytime, they're tossing me too, imagine.
I, I can do a Zoom. I can't meet a person in the middle of the day, but.
Yeah, I would be happy to zoom in and actually spend time talking about this. Just try to jump into what I'm.
We'll, we'll have to, thank you.
All right. Okay, right?
Uh, I, I don't have revised statute in my head. Um, I, I think these, uh, I think committees that are clearly advisory to the board and P N do mostly remote.
Right, do it in the office.
If we can just figure out a way to just make it so that it's, uh, we can.
Okay.
Yeah. I would, I would just add one more comment in that. You know, to make a couple of these points. Uh, there is no policy that is perfect, that is acceptable to a difficult hypothetical. I, I sometimes am a little scarred when I find years working and other side of bodies where people use process instead of just saying, I really don't want to do this. To instead, anybody who really just doesn't want to do this, let's have that conversation as opposed to trying to deal with it later here. So I'm having a tendency to work on it. If there are, hey, I want to get to guests, but I just have a couple objections. I would feel if someone's like, no, no, I just don't want to do this. It's like, I feel like we'll be sticky for us. I'll make myself available for me to.
Well, maybe just give a hand. I mean, I think everyone wants to do this, right? So I don't think that, I think it's more just making sure that, you know, there is some flexibility built into it. Um, and then we're not also, you know, putting the superintendent that position where like William wanted out that you have three or four people and how do you, have we not given them the tools to make those decisions without having a major, so.
Being in a bad position does occasionally seem to be part of the job.
Your point is welcome. All right, or future superintendent. Okay, um, so with that being said, what we'll do is we will, um, remove, let's see. So we will, we'll just remove the should we not, actually, we, sorry. G J, is that, the policy is this, these two?
Yeah, G.
G S.
G J.
Okay, so G J dot A B. So we're gonna remove those two from the consent, right?
Yeah.
Okay. There is somebody, who, who would do that, just removing those from that consent.
You can just, uh, remove that, like, the Russian.
Okay, uh, all right, moving on. Uh, the donation from the Vermont Academy of Science and Engineering. Anyone save that for Eric?
Uh, so taking all of our tech innovation, this early fourteen hundred dollar grant for an engineering project that will give us some supplies and hopefully call this group together. Excellent. Next one is a very generous one thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars, twenty-eight cents donation for Forrest writing here for the, for it was the origin of this.
Any questions or comments on those two donations? Thank you very much for those. Um, all right, moving on to risk our action. Uh, I think here we can have a motion.
Yes, I'm gonna do it this way. Move to approve items D, C, D, F, and G by consent. Then I'll give another motion after that.
Second on that one.
I'll second it.
All right, lose that. All those in favor? All right, we're already unanimous on that one. Do we have a, another motion?
Yes, move to approve policies B A, B B A A, B B A B, D G A, I G A, I G A R, I G A E, and I G D as presented.
Second on that one.
I'll second for consistency, say.
All those in favor?
That is also. Clarify for the folks at home that just pulled the one about non-resident students wishing for a future.
Permission to make one comment. Um, the Vermont Community Foundation, I think it's important to note that that's from the Milk Pride Fund. Because we didn't talk about that. And since he's a former principal and lives in town, um, it just feels important to recognize that Caroline and Milk were behind that donation.
Good. All right, um, I report that, sure, I'll keep it, um, simply, I just thank you all for all the, on the budgets. Uh, we've made great progress. Hopefully everyone has a great holiday. I am Saturday fourth. This is our first year, ten years where we will not be attending any M C S holiday conference.
You know, it's so weird.
A little different, your kids not there. So that's gonna be a.
Unoffended on the half of the chorus, lady, so that this beautiful gravel is what it is, you're.
They did, they got to my line this morning, I was driving by, this will be our first year that we will not be attending that, so. Anyways, I think, uh, we are going to be, Willie has let us know too, it's okay, if I, we will be looking for any board member come next. Anyways, I think uh we are going to be, Lily has let us know too, it's okay, like, we will be looking for a new board member come next year as well, so come March, so if anyone has suggestions uh for a new board member, Lily, understandably, is moving on, giving all of her things that she has, for some reason, we just don't have time for this as well, um. But anyway, we really thank Lily for all of her help over the years and advice and support, and obviously we're proud to work with you for the rest of your term here.
I'm a beautiful basement crazy hall.
Um, but just so everyone knows, we will be looking for uh somebody to be running in March, so if anyone has suggestions or wants to at least get their word out, um, you know, applications, you're welcome. And I'm happy to talk to anybody.
Petitions are in my office.
Petition, you're in the office.
And when are they due?
Uh, January twenty-seventh, or I.
And our town clerk is a state, so.
Happy to talk with anybody, um, that might be interested in it, what it entails and what we do, so. Um, okay, on that, we have the principals report.
Yeah, I'll give you the highlights, I couldn't see, isn't it written? Um, enrollment is two hundred twenty-four students, you can see this current sections and the numbers of students there. The campus house, uh, section should have an updated picture because today is very difficult, but how, there's a, you wanna go out in the darks? Farewell to Devo, who will be hiring from this box in R G's, is the best, at least, he hired his place. Came to the C D's base, said he's probably considering this.
We'll leave it at that.
Yeah, uh, and then exciting for us, we ranked the US World, uh, News and World Report as the number one elementary school in Vermont for the second time. Noted that graduate she volunteered to the great school, who ranks number five in the entry for elementary school, so. Hey, that's also dust. Did, we asked last night to communicate together some information about non-residential staff, students, class sizes, there's a whole lot of things we look at there. Had questions, I answered it. And I wanted to highlight community reading day, which is what happened tomorrow, we are hoping that the weather won't allow it, because we're going to rain today, because Julian has had to postpone it once already.
No.
So I never hear, it's just a delay, we.
Okay, good.
And not on here, but I did want to note, and I can send to board members, that A O E, as a result of the listening and learning score that the, um, the initial, uh, century trade education, you know, across the state, wanted to say that we put together his s- series of thirty-minute sessions for the consultant that the state hired about best practices in staffing. And I attended the one this week, there was best practice in the elementary school staffing, which is a classroom teacher, they have a section that I'll also attend about best practices for special teachers, for interventionists, uh, for coaches. They're all, they're all new sessions, but it was it was informative, and I'm thinking kind of, if you could view the government one or two, because it's shaping the direction that I think that A O E is trying to push this towards for class sizes. It has some interesting ideas of how to, how to navigate those waters between staff who are used to teaching twelve, fourteen, fifteen years up to, what seems like twenty, twenty-four is not the range, but renovation, or giving some stipends for teachers who are willing to take on a larger class size, or, but they're just some interesting ideas, so I'll continue to go to those, but I'll just send the leads that they're good, little half hour show, so maybe it's just, you know, if you're. Now, do we have any questions?
Sorry, Sean, those were A O E meetings, or principals about you?
For anyone who fleshed with them, so I, I invited, like, our staff, I invited special. We talked about special teachers. But I think not only do we need to understand, but our staff needs to understand what's, what this direction they're in. I'm dying now, yeah. It's kind of.
All right, well, thank you, Sean, for the, for us mentioning my reports, I could see that ranking, which is great. Thank you for needing that. Um, all right, any other questions for Sean?
Just to remind me again, what rank did great school get? What, what rank did we get?
I forget number one.
Thank you.
So calling up on the else question, if you had to put this in Olympic terms, what medal would Marion Cross get? If she did, would you let her rank? Thank you, sir, I believe we are both equally proud of each other.
Did our missive and Heather I rank?
I don't know.
They're up there.
All right, uh, Robin?
Um, just a few things, we received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from Mizzpitt to improve the staff lounge area, and a lot of work was done on that this summer. And we finished spending the money recently, and we're, we're able to put a couch and chair up there as well as just make the place much more comfortable and inviting for the staff, so I think that's been a really positive change with the um school this year. And we've been continuing with our curriculum work, we had our last second grade release day yesterday, and we're finalizing our first real unit plans along storyline for our science unit, so that's been exciting. And um continuing with our work with the English committee, which has been great, it's comprised of, we have over twenty-two people who volunteered their time in all, almost all of our grade levels, paid for by special education, Jillian, our library media specialist, so it's wide variety of people, I feel like we're making great progress there, we're starting to look at the knitting grades of what our literacy log should look like, what resources and materials we might need, so we're making a lot of progress with that as well, and that, again, has been a all-volunteer effort. Um, and continuing to document curriculum, and I've been sending drafts back to individual teachers regarding publishing the documents, so that's been good, but it's continuing to go through various iterations, so love curriculum work right now.
All right. Question to Robin. Thank you, Robin. Jamie, you wanna say anything else, or do you?
Tracy does either.
Tracy, you wanna, did Jamie say, first board? Um, any other committee reports?
Uh, I can just say, negotiations continue with both teachers and spokesmen.
Sure. Absolutely. I know they're not really relevant in Norwich, but kind of relevant in Norwich, I know I've been going to a number of the Dresden athletic, uh, what we call middle school sports community now, right, so it's been being done on a weekly basis, so I do think about what might be coming down the fight from slight increases in budgets, um, over in Dresden, that might be one of the things, because that's gonna be potentially be added as a warrant article, which you give the townspeople, as I, as I kind of, I think the way we roll out, the ability to, um, first, you know, seriously, we're gonna do some research, but the ability to vote on it, that the warrant article be learned such a way that they see it become a permanent, ongoing thing, not just a not just all of a sudden happen, people every year, a warrant article, um, but it would be moving into at least having some initial programming, you know, work at middle school for sports, starting it was weird for sports, several, uh, Norwich residents, as your kids move through, uh, the rep will still stay the same through six for both towns, and then we're setting eight would be middle school, and again, thoroughly limited out of the shooting for uh, you know, fall, transfer, sport, probably, plus four in the season, maybe two sports in spring, probably. Um, but there's work being done on that, actually. Um, okay, executive session, do you need that for a team executive session, or based on what's being read here? Do you wanna discuss it? You want to go with the executive session, okay, why don't you move into executive session, Jamie, you can probably we, we, that do you wait? As you can check down, we are.
Garrett, sorry, could we discuss it in vain terms out here, or is there any difference?
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Okay, probably which?
It doesn't care.
We're very lucky to improve it, based on what we've brought.
Uh. Well. Dude, so we had a teacher out of determining leave, that was asked to extend that four weeks. She was due to return back January sixth, she now returned back February fifth. We are it works out long for us, it's scheduled for her, and it's, it's no impact for us, we're in color, we're inside colors. I have a great, the door, it's a lot of.
Okay, sounds good. If there's no voting on that. What other?
Yeah, they're, yeah.
The votes could have been public, so many.
Yes.
Do you want, I, I'm happy to make a motion.
Wanna make a motion?
Um, do I, do I name the teacher?
Um, I'm sorry, it's, it's nasty, sorry, yes, approved to the attorney, yes, thank you.
Um, I would move to approve Katie Frichy to extend her maternity leave and return on February fifth, twenty twenty-five.
I get it, seconds, all those in favor? That is also unanimous. Okay, um, agendas for next, uh, next meeting? Is that in now, or feel free to look it now? This comment, do you have, I hope you do a journal. Is there something, I mean.
Yeah.
My goal. And, uh, oh, sorry, we, we have to.
All those in favor, right?
Unanimous, thank you all.
Thank you. I wanted to announce that the, uh, Marion Cross, those are made in Norwich times.
We're gonna say hi.
That's okay, you, I just find it's public, please.